Just glad to be nice. America and to the Republic. Who would just stand. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty, justice for all. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone for the March 8, 2021. Planning Board hearing for the town of Brookhaven. Do a quick roll call, Mr. Zarcone.
Present.
Ms. Kelly.
Present.
Mr. Aludis.
Present.
Ms. Dunn.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Rose.
Present.
Chairman Pascal, present. With us, we have Counselors of the Planning Board, Ms. Lee Ray, Commissioner of the Planning Department, Ms. Beth Riley, and we have our Secretary, Ms. Arlene McCallion. Ms. McCallion, are there any items on the agenda that will not be heard this afternoon?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number four, Luceritos at Center Riches has requested to be held until March 22.
How about item number one, Arlene?
The applicant's attorney reached out to me. They would like to adjourn it until April 5.
Okay. So, item number one, Eastport Meadows is adjourned to April 5, and item number four, Luceritos at Center Riches is to be heard on March 22.
Mr. Chairman, can I make an announcement?
Yes, Counselor.
If anyone wishes to speak on an application, please in the chat function or the Q and A, let me know what hearing you are here to speak on and whether you're representing the applicant or if you're here from the public.
Okay, thank you. We're going to begin with item number two. It's a miscellaneous matter, Jerusalem Hollow Road at Manaville.
The application is to revise the bond figures for an undeveloped road improvement. This application had been approved several years ago, and the town has updated its bonding numbers, and they're coming in to get the new numbers to reflect the current values. So there are three staff recommendations.
Is the applicant present or?
Yes, just give me one moment, please. They just sent me a message. Mary Desmond I'm bringing in, Mr. Chairman.
Who is it?
Mary Desmond.
Mary Desmond, is she on? Ms. Desmond, are you on?
I, yeah, I'm trying to start the video.
Okay, we see. Okay, can you raise your right hand, please? You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, have you received a copy of the staff recommendations?
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay, are you good with them? Or you have questions or concerns over the amounts?
No, I spoke with my client. He's aware of all the requirements from the previous meeting and the ones that haven't been met already. He's willing to meet, so.
Okay, so you're good with those recommendations. All right, is there anyone in the public on this one, Counselor?
I can tell, honestly, no one's answered me just yet, so, no.
Okay, does the board have any questions? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Board Member Karen Dunn. I'd like to make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion opposed by Ms. Dunn.
Second, Richard Smith.
Second by Mr. Smith, Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Aludis.
I vote yes.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Thank you, Ms. Desmond.
Thank you.
Item number three, B Builders Group Incorporated at Shirley.
Application is located on the north side of Montauk Highway, 560 feet west of Bonnie Drive in Shirley. The application before you is for modification to the footprint and elevations of a previously approved 4,000-square-foot major restaurant with accessory drive-through, including parking, drainage, and landscaping. Property is zoned J Business 5 and is approximately 1.1 acres in size. There are four staff recommendations, last dated 2/22/21.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I have to make the announcement again because not a single person has responded to me other than Ms. Desmond. If you are here to speak on an application, please let me know in the chat or in the Q and A what application you are here to speak on, so I can let you in. At this moment, I don't have anyone here for number three.
The applicant is not present?
They may be, but as I said, not, no one has let me know it. Let me just check, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, wait. We'll come back to it. Is this still a Dairy Queen application?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to move on to the next one?
I'll move on. If they come in, Counselor, just let us know, and then we'll come back to it, okay? Item number four, Luceritos at Center Riches is being heard on March 22. Item number.
Mr. Chairman, someone here is here now for item number three.
Okay, we'll bring them in.
Yep, just give me one moment.
Let me know when they're in, Counselor.
Right, for item number three.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, this is Tahir Pureshi. I am the engineer for the project.
Mr. Pureshi, can you raise your right hand? I can't see you, but let me know when you have your right hand raised.
My right hand is up.
Okay, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, sir, I do.
Oh, Mr. Pureshi wants to present the application. Have you received a copy of the staff recommendations?
Uh, yes, we have agreed the previous recommendations and the conditions. Uh, this project, I just would like to brief you, was approved for Dairy Queen, and we have utilized the standard prototype layout for the floor plan and have the town approval. But recently, they have made the changes in their floor plan layout, and the buildings are now narrow and long. So to do that, we have, we are proposing the changes or the amendment in the footprint while we maintain 4,000 square feet with, which includes the walk-in coolers. So we have not increased the square feet, rather changed the footprint and made the building irregular and long. That, that is the amendment.
Okay, but it hasn't changed the exterior elevation look, has it?
The elevations would be changed because the building is a little bit longer, but we, we, the signs and everything else, pretty much, we tried to keep the same, which was approved previously.
This is the amended elevations? If you'd like, I can pull up. I can pull up the.
Yes.
So it looks like the center has been shifted to the.
Yes.
The color rendering is the same as the original approved elevations?
There is, there is a change. We have sent, we have submitted the color rendering for the new one. I think it's probably better for you.
Just, it's taking some time to load.
Yeah, it's the first one you had up.
Yep. It looks like the stone has been removed that was in the, formerly in the center, as the chairman pointed out.
Yes.
All right, so, do you have any questions on those recommendations? Mr. Kresh?
No, we don't.
Okay, Counselors general and the public, that we should speak on this application in the chat room yet? No one present? Board members, any questions? No question, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion opposed by Ms. Dunn.
Second, Richard Smith.
Second by Mr. Smith. Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly. Ms. Kelly. Mr. Aludis.
I vote aye.
Mr. Chairman, can I just interrupt you? There's a message coming on the screen from a Doug Hines who's here on number three, he said.
Okay.
Which is this matter. So before we continue, should we?
Yeah, well, Counselor, did you just come in the chat room?
Um, sure, it's, he's, I believe, here for the applicant, but I, I'll bring him in to see if he has anything else he'd like to add.
All right, so Mr. Hines is for the applicant?
Yes.
Well, does the board?
Mr. Hines, you're in.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I've been sending messages since Lee announced the chat room and the Q and A. I, I think there's a little bit of a lag.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's all right, Lee. I, I think there's just a technological lag between.
Mr. Hines, Mr. Hines, can I just interrupt you for one second? Can you please raise your right hand? You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Hines.
Uh, just briefly, Tahir has covered the ground very thoroughly. He's a good engineer, and he was involved in 2017 when the town board approved this, and in 2019, just two years ago this week, when this board approved it. Uh, I, I would only add one thing, that although the building has been slightly elongated in the northeast corner, the width has been dramatically reduced. And in addition to the setbacks that were approved by this board two years ago, to the rear particularly, which is the only direction in which there's any residential development, there is an odd feature to this property, which is a 50-foot strip of naturally landscaped property to our north, as well as to our south. Heavily landscaped, restricted as to tree removal, and effectively screening this property from every direction imaginable, certainly north and south. So the changes that are made are modest. We don't think they have a significant impact on the community, and we would respectfully request your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. Okay, so the motion, motion by Ms. Dunn, second by Mr. Smith, and says Zarcone voted aye. Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mr. Aludis?
I vote aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, now moving on, number four has been heard on March 22 as Luceritos at Center Riches. Item number five is Heatherwood Golf at Satacet.
The property is located on the southwest corner of New York State Route 347 and Arrowhead Lane in Satacet, also within the Port Jefferson Station Terryville Civic Association. The applicant proposes to amend building upgrades, unit mixes, and golf course layout changes. There are three staff recommendations, last dated 2/25/21.
Thank you, Commissioner. Counselor, is the applicant present?
Let me double check.
If anyone wishes to speak on any of the items or applications, please let Counselor Ray know that you're here and put the name or the item number next to your name, so we know when to call you.
I have Mike Marinus.
Mike Marina?
Hi, can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Marinus.
Hi, I'm the engineer for the applicant with the firm Barra Panachi and Van Wheel.
Okay, I don't, I hear you. I don't have video. Can you raise your right hand, please? Let me know when you have it up.
Okay.
You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you. Do you have a copy of the staff recommendations on the modifications?
I did not see those, no.
Uh, Commissioner, can you put those up, so Mr. Marinus can review them?
Okay, we have no, no issues with the comment. If you'd like, I can present to you what the amendment is.
Yes, please do that.
Okay, this is an amended site plan application for Heatherwood Golf. It was previously approved by this board, and we have come in for an amendment to change the unit mix. The number of units remains the same, still 200 units. The site layout is potentially the same, the road network is the same. The proposed pieces for the project were modified slightly, reconfigured. The total number of bedrooms in this project was reduced, and the net square footage of the buildings was reduced. Therefore, the sanitary flow was also reduced under this project, and the net landscape area increased. But in general, the layout is as was originally approved by the town. The Health Department has recently reviewed the minor modifications to the house connections, and they have verbally approved the project. There that, that, that's essentially it. The, the concept is this, oh, the, the golf course itself was also reconfigured and redesigned by a golf course architect. Those plans have been submitted as well for the town's approval.
Okay. Counselors, is anyone in the public who should speak on this application?
I'm not getting a lot of responses. No.
No one in the public? Uh, the board members have any questions? Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion opposed by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dunn, Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mr. Aludis?
I vote aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number six is a change of use for the special permit. This Champion Specialty Services at Hootsville.
Sorry, I'm just having a little bit of difficulty. Give me a second.
All right, take your time.
The application is located at 65 Corporate Drive in Hootsville on the west side of Corporate Drive, 1,740 square, um, sorry, feet north of Blue Point Road. The applicant is seeking special permits for outdoor storage and overnight parking of registered vehicles at an existing industrial site. That site is zoned L Industrial 1 and is 2.37 acres in size. There are 10 staff recommendations and two special permits recommended, last dated 3/4/21.
Thank you, Commissioner. Counselor, is the applicant present?
I'm not, uh, let me just see. I'm getting a message now. Oh, okay. Um, I'm bringing Mr. Hines back in.
Let me know when he's in.
Okay.
Mr. Hines, you there?
I am indeed, Mr. Chairman. Hello again.
Hello. Okay, have you received a copy of the staff recommendations?
We have.
Can you put those up, Commissioner, so the board can see them, because there's a couple of concerns.
Yes, we did. Number one, I think, is the one you're referring to, Mr. Chairman. I know the applicant did not want to install the fence. And when we looked at the code, the fence has a specific requirement that must be met, so we could not alter that.
Okay, that's the one I was referring to. I wanted the board to see it. Is Mr. Hines, you aware of that?
I am. Just one question for Commissioner Riley. Is it the town's position that the planning board cannot waive that requirement? Or, or that it's a code requirement you had to point out?
It's a code requirement that the planning board does not have the authority to waive.
Okay, I, I was advised differently months ago by a representative of planning, shall go nameless.
Okay.
We were going to make the argument that we had very little to screen, and we had considerable natural screening on all sides of the property. Uh, but if it's not something that can be waived by the planning board, we would observe the recommendation in paragraph one, as well as the other recommendations. That was the only point we had.
Sure, the planning board can waive parking, landscaping, buffers, and drainage. However, they do not have the authority to waive special permit criteria.
Can I just then raise one point? The, the requirement in the code is for a tongue-in-groove, tongue-in-groove fencing, and the only problem with that is we have a rather wide driveway entrance that is going to be serviced by a mechanical gate. I don't believe we can get that in a tongue-in-groove treatment.
I had, my notes, I had a chain link, black fence. Is that also?
That's fine.
Yeah.
With all due respect, I'm not sure what a tongue-in-groove fence looks like. I don't know, is that what they mean by that?
I think you're referring to like a Woodstock Cave-type fence where the weight on an open, a, a large opening, it wouldn't hold the weight, it would sag in the middle. But if you went with a chain link fence, black in color, I mean, the, the post would be able to support a large opening and everything. Is that correct, Mr. Hines?
Yes, that's fine, and truthfully, whatever we put in there is surplus to the natural screening, which is very dense on all sides, year-round screening, so we would be perfectly fine with a chain link fence with whatever color slats the town wants. Black is fine.
All right, Counselor, is there anyone in the public on this application which to speak?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Does the board have any questions, Mr. Hines?
Mr. Chairman, this is John Rose speaking. I just would like to ask what the usage of the property is for.
Yes, thank you. Champion is a, a leading bridge paint contractor. They're working on the Verzano Throdsneck Tappan Zee, as I still call it. George Washington, they do the Viaducts. They do interior commercial painting as well. However, this site will be limited to business operations only, 10 employees, one or two business visitors a day. The storage, with the exception of the five pickup trucks, will be all towable equipment, specialty sanitary equipment, desanitizing, and so forth. Once a job is set up, all of the equipment and all of the paint and, and other deliveries are made to the construction site, so we don't have that activity here. When I spoke with the applicant about their daily truck visits, the answer was maybe one a week, sometimes three to four weeks without any truck visits. They come in simply for minor servicing, oil changes and so forth, but normally just to pick up a, a trailer and, and drive away, so very limited activity. Uh, all of the heavier trucks stay at the construction sites.
So there is, there is maintenance on the vehicles being performed on the site?
That's right, maintenance, simple automotive maintenance, no chemical or paint storage on site.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the board?
Just want to confirm, on the fence, are we going to change that to a chain link fence?
Yes, black.
Tongue-in-groove or higher, let me open it again. Or higher quality barrier?
Nope, nope, but the chain link fence would suffice. That's what I have in my notes. Is that correct?
You should leave the wording as it is. I don't know, you know, parts of it can be chain linked if that's what's required for the gate. For example.
I, Lee, Ms. Ray, if I could just interject, I, we've thought about this from the beginning, and initially, I was under the impression that it could be waived, and so we haven't dwelled on it, but I suppose the board could make the determination tonight that the chain link fence is of higher quality than the tongue-in-groove fence.
That's correct.
They, they could do that and, and meet the code that way.
You just need to have the slats. That's what it says, with no gaps between slats.
Right. Well, I'll, uh, yeah, I, I imagine a chain link fence with plastic slats has at least some openings. Although the activities are going to be invisible for a considerable distance in every direction at site. If you have an aerial photograph handy, if not, I could show you one. It's, it's very heavily screened, in fact. The bear with me a minute. We have natural screening. We, we had proposed some fencing and some landscaping in the two areas at the southeast and southwest corners of the building where we felt there was some visual ability to visualize it, see it from the street, not from the neighbors, but from the street at least. So we filled it in there, but we've got natural landscaping on the east side at the closest point of 25 feet at the extreme northeast corner of the storage area. There's 50 feet beyond that on the neighbor's property. There's 37 to 60 feet in the rear, and another 20 feet on the neighbor's property, 107 feet to the west to our private roadway that serves only this building and 5,000 Corporate Court. And of course, the building screens us from the view of somebody on the south side of the property, so I, I will leave it at this and then not burden the record any, any further. If the board sees fit to determine the chain link fence throughout is of superior quality, that's fine, and if not, we'll defer to the sound judgment of the board as to what the code requires.
Do you want to leave it as it says and have them work with the planning board, the planning department to?
Work with the staff, Ms. Ray, if you agree, as to what a higher quality barrier is.
Right, I, I think the board can just, um, I mean, the board could make a decision if they want to to state that a chain link fence with slats, you know, and put that into the decision, so it gives clear guidance. I think that's probably a better way to go if the board is going to agree that that's how they would like to move forward. I think it's clear for staff.
Yeah, well, let's do that then, because the, the loose end here is the higher quality aspect of it, and it is a higher quality, it'll last longer. We'll put that into the condition, and we'll close this, okay? Is that all right? Any other questions by the board?
No.
May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, this is Board Member Pete Zarcone. I make a motion to close this hearing and place it on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Mr. Zarcone. Can I have a second?
Second, Mr. Aludis.
I second that.
Second by Mr. Aludis. Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Good evening.
Item number seven is a site plan, amended site plan, Hidden Meadows STP at Middle Island.
Now, the application before you is located on the northwest corner of Bailey Road and Curran's Road in Middle Island. It's to replace an existing failing sewage treatment plant with a new sewage treatment plant and associated improvements. The overall parcel is 19, 19.59 acres, and it is zoned multifamily. There are six staff recommendations for approval, and they're last dated 3/4/21.
Thank you, Commissioner. Counselor, is the applicant present?
Yes, I have three people in. Chris Robinson?
Yes, thank you, Lee. We have not seen a staff recommendation. If you could put it up on the screen, we greatly appreciate it.
Commissioner, put them up. In the meantime, Mr. Robinson, can you raise your right hand, please? You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Robinson, you can take your time and look over those recommendations.
Sure. Minimize the picture. That looks fine.
You're okay with those recommendations. I also have a, is there a storage container on this site? Are you aware of that? There's a storage container that has to be removed. I didn't see it in the conditions.
Uh, I did not see that.
Will we put the?
Pulling up the site plan. It's just loading.
Yes, there is a storage container that is located near the sewage treatment plant building that is being indicated as to remain.
And that is the container. The staff recommendation is to remove. Or legal, I think, remove or legalize. Can't be in both screens.
Pull the site plan up, other.
Sorry about that.
If you go to the second one down, the blow-up plan, SP 3.
This is the container.
Right there, just to the left of the wooded area. We also have a landscape plan where we screened it. It's just an existing metal storage container to store some supplies. The building right above it is the treatment plant building. The building right above it is the treatment plant building, which will be converted into storage when the new treatment plant is completed.
That container is, does not have an, is not permitted.
All right, we'll take a look at that, see what we have to do to remove it, we are converting the old sewage treatment plant to a storage building, so I shouldn't see the reason why we would need to maintain them both.
All right, thank you, councillors, we'll put that as part of the conditions for, the container has to be removed from site.
I believe it's in the conditions already?
I didn't see it, I went too quick on the screen, I tried.
Yes, it'll be one of the conditions.
Oh, there it is, okay, I didn't see it earlier, all right. Mr. Robinson, is there anything else you want to add to this application?
It's a very simple application, we're under consent order to replace the sewage treatment plant, we're putting a new V E S S T, Biologically Engineered Single Sludge Treatment System, just to the north of the existing plant, reutilizing most of the pools, as far as site work, we're upgrading the handicap stalls throughout the rest of the development, adding some handicap ramps on the surrounding roads. We did have an opportunity on February 18th to present to the Middle Island Civic Association, got an email letter of support back from them, which we've submitted, and we're really here, any questions you might have, we'd be happy to answer them, I also have Shiner on the call with us, who's my partner and handled the sewage treatment plant design itself.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, councillor, is anyone in the public wish to speak on the application? If there's anyone in the public that wishes to speak on any of the items with the applications that are on the agenda for this afternoon, please put next to your name, the item number or agenda name, this way the councillor knows when to call you into the meeting.
Yes, Maria Russo, member of the public, I did have a question.
Okay.
I'm sorry, because it's hard to see on the screen where the location would be for the new plant.
Is this Ms. Russo speaking?
Yes.
Okay, I don't, do you have video on your?
Oh.
It is immediately north of the existing sewage.
Ms. Russo, can you please raise your right hand, and let me know when you have your right hand raised?
Yes, it is.
You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Okay, now you can ask your question now.
Yeah, I was just looking for where the new location was going to be.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Robinson, this box here, I don't know if you can see my screen right here, it's the existing.
Correct.
And this, right, abutting it, is the new.
Correct, there'll be a small control building, that's the box on the left there on the upper area, there'll be a pump station in between, which is the round circle, and then the actual treatment train is the longer rectangle to the right of that. That's, treatment train is flush with the ground and so is the pump station.
Okay, so that, and correct me if I'm wrong, so that's going back further into the wooded area, not onto the road per se?
Right, it's going more to the north.
And there, I'm assuming there'd be no disruption past that location, as you know, there's a lot of wildlife and things back there still.
Yeah, we show a clearing line on the plant around the left side of the treatment plant, that'll be the maximum extent of the clearing. There will be no removal of vegetation between the existing plant and Curran's Road. We will be utilizing existing service entrance driveway that's there today and will be just upgrading with a new concrete apron on Curran's Road.
Okay, and there would be no piping or anything going along the back to what would be considered River Road?
No, it's all, all the work is going to be contained right at the treatment plant.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, Ms. Russo, thank you, is anyone else in the public, councillor? Any board members have questions?
Just one, one comment, Mr. Chairman, that particular condition said be removed or legalized. So do they have that option? For the metal, the metal storage building?
They would need to bring it into conformance with New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code if they wanted to legalize it.
It's a nonutility steel shipping container, just like a shed would be. I'm not sure what would need to happen from the fire code perspective.
Well, as, as for the, as for the uniform code, it would have to have, if it's going to be, you know, permanently, we'd need a foundation, meet, you know, wind design, snow, all of those sort of things.
Absolutely, okay, so we'll, listen, if we can't legalize it, we will remove it. As I said before, we're going to convert, once, once the new treatment plant is fully constructed, we will be converting the old building into a storage unit.
Any other questions by the board? They have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is John Rose, board member, I make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Mr. Rose.
Second, Richard Smith.
Second by Mr. Smith, Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mr. Alutis?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 7-0, thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you very much.
Item number eight is a site plan with a variance, it's Tate's Bake Shop site work at East Mariches.
Application before you is located at 62 Pine Street in East Mariches, 248 feet south of Froen Road in East Mariches. Application is to expand the parking lot to the north corner of the site, including drainage, lighting and landscaping. There are 12 staff recommendations and one planning board variance for loading stalls, last dated 2/5/21.
Thank you, Commissioner, councillor, is the applicant present?
Yes, the applicant is in, Mr. Russell?
Good afternoon, everyone, can everyone hear me?
I could hear you very faintly, though.
All right, let me check my audio settings.
You also have video, Mr. Russell?
Yes, Mr. Russell's in on video, and maybe, Mr. Russell, if you just speak a little louder, I think it's just coming through a little quietly.
You look like a disc jockey. Can you raise your right hand, please?
All right.
You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Russell, you want to, you haven't received a copy of the staff recommendations?
No, I have not, I don't think so.
Hold them up.
We're going to put them up on the screen for you, I'd like you to review them. Take your time.
All right. Okay.
Let's know when you're done.
All right, yep, I think I've got it, actually, is there any way this could be emailed to me?
Yeah, we can send you a copy, of course, but you want to present the application, what the, what it's for, the board and the public? Go over the application.
All right, so the, so the application was for a site plan for Tate's Bake Shop, located in East Mariches, Long Island. They're looking at putting in a parking expansion, it's going to tie into the existing parking lot. Now, there is a variance as well, because we do have a small path that they need within the front yard setback, that's what the variance is for. There's also some storm drainage proposed grading, we have an underground detention going under that proposed parking lot as well. And then there's some improvements to the front entrance drive of the facility. So the smaller building on the northeast corner of the property is known as the pies and cakes building, the larger building on the southwest is the cookies building. The work that we're focusing on is in that upper right-hand corner. So there's that parking lot, we have proposed 157 spaces total for this, for this property. I know Tate's Bake Shop, they currently have their employees parking on, in grass areas. So this is very crowded, so this, this parking lot is needed for their employees and also to provide enough space for cars maneuver and get in and out of the property. There's also proposed site lighting as well. There is a site lighting drawing set that was submitted along with the site plan from the, from the same company, from the Dennis Group, showing that that we're not spilling over any, there's no light pollution going on beyond the property line, I know that was a concern. Initially, we're looking at having that frontage's drive illuminated for safety reasons, but going back and forth with the MPOA, and also our client, we decided to, to just not have any spill over, so there's no variance on the site lighting.
There's no landscape, I think it's going to be removed for this parking lot expansion?
Yes, so there is a, there's a substantial amount of landscaping being removed, I don't know if you can go to the C 0.5 plan, just to show you that extends, the extent of the trees being removed. All right, yep, that's me just, yep, right there. So we have that hatched area, highest north, that's the wooded area, there's an existing wooded area that's going to be removed in order to fit this parking lot. So we did bring on a landscape architect as well, who provided a plan for us. So a lot of the, a lot of the larger trees that we're removing, that we are removing is going to be replaced. We're planning on having a lot of the landscaping going along that frontage of the property. There's also a landscaping, there's a landscaping drawing included in that set as well for you guys to see.
Do you know what page that is, I can pull that up?
It's on a, it's on a separate document. I believe it's called Tate's Bake Shop Concept Plan, there you go, yep. Yep, so here we have, we're going to be, we're going to be relocating that chain link fence running along, so that's going to be pushed back further into the property to make space for the landscaping along the frontage, just to beautify the frontage along Pine Street. So there's evergreen screening, which is right along that fence line, going straight down the frontage of the property. There's proposed bushes, maples. And then we're going to be, what we can keep of the existing wooded area, we will keep. So we're just making enough space to fit that proposed parking lot on the property.
That concludes your presentation, how many trailers, you have some trailers on this property that have to be removed?
Yeah, so there is some existing trailers, one of them is for COVID testing for their employees. And then there's a larger trailer, which is just east of the cookies building to the south. That's also a trailer for, just to have a break room for the employees, so they can maintain that six-foot separation during the pandemic. So, yeah, as soon as, as soon as it's all said and done, those trailers would be removed, I know before, they had tents out on that property. But in the winter season, they brought in a trailer to accommodate their, their employees.
All right, councillor, is anyone in the public on this application?
Chairman. Did you hear me? No, Mr. Chairman, there's no one.
There is no one, okay, board members have any questions for Mr. Russell?
No.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, this is Board Member Karen Dunn, I'd like to make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Ms. Dunn.
Second, Richard Smith.
Second by Mr. Smith, Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly? Ms. Kelly?
I, I vote aye.
Mr. Alutis?
Aye.
The Rose?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 7-0, thank you, Mr. Russell.
All right, thank you.
Item number nine, 520 William Floyd Parkway, LLC at Shirley.
The application is for the property known as 520 William Floyd Parkway in Shirley, to construct a new gasoline station and a 1,750 square foot convenience store with parking and landscape variances. There are 11 staff recommendations, five planning board variances, and the recommendations are last dated 3/8/21. I think we did update that, though, yes, we did update that till today, the applicant has submitted a revised plan that reduces the building by 105 square feet, and also submitted a new truck route for the dumpster route plan, and that is also contained in this application.
Thank you, Commissioner, the applicant present, councillor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Kevin, you're muted.
There we go. Okay, very good, good evening, Mr. Chairman, or good afternoon, members of the board, Kevin O'Brien, here on behalf of the applicant, also, I believe, perhaps somewhere also in the electronic medium somewhere, is my design professional, Glenn Graham, if there are any questions of a technical nature. We've been before, the board previously connected with this application, as well as the town board, the zoning board, obtained the approvals and submitted them as part of this application. I've received and reviewed the revised staff recommendations that are dated today, and we agree with all of them. It has been a bit of a metamorphosis with respect to the application, there were concerns relative to the elevational drawings, so we have made revisions to them reflecting the sort of recited front. So we've upgraded the elevations and the front of the building, as well as to make the side of the, the various parts of the building look like, look like a front. In addition, there were concerns raised relative to some of the accessing and traffic circulation. Our design professionals have been working closely with the traffic and highway in connection with that, and as such, they reduced the size of the building, they moved the dispense, they moved the they reduced some of the area with the dispensers, reduced the size of the canopy, and also moved the underground storage tanks, so this way, there'd be, as well as repositioned the dumpster, so as to enable better access for the trash removal, as well as for fuel deliveries, and this way there'd be no interference between either the pump islands or the parking, I mean, even though generally those type of services are scheduled for off-peak hours, nevertheless, the design professionals with the assistance of planning, traffic and highway, were able to come up with a revised plan, which we believe addresses the various concerns that were expressed to us, so I think, I think hopefully the third time is a charm, and that we've addressed the various comments and concerns that were expressed. We're proud of the work and we look for the board's favorable discretion, if there are any questions of me or my design professional, please feel free to let us know.
Councillor, is anyone in the public on this application?
Mr. Chairman.
There is no one in the public?
No.
Okay, councillor, on the, we've had several conversations with the staff on this, and I'm sure Mr. Albano's been giving you some of the recommendations that I made, as well as traffic and safety. And on 128, traffic safety sent me a memo, as well as you, the fact that the building was too large, which I'm glad to see reduced it somewhat. One of those, those recommendations, that reduction in the number of pumps on the site. One of those, those recommendations, that reduction in the number of pumps on the site. So what you did is you reduced the size of the building. You made some changes to the circulation. And then traffic and safety came out with a second recommendation, still recommending reduction of the building and also recommending removal of the pump. He said the only way the site would work is if it would be do, reduced hours. Or reduced the time period where the traffic wasn't as heavy as it would be normal during normal traffic hours. So I mean, is there a reason why you're reluctant, or your clients are reluctant to move one of those pumps as a recommendation by the planning department, as well as traffic and safety and highway?
Well, it was, it was my understanding that it was sort of an either, an either or.
It was never an either or, if you want to read the recommendations.
So, and, and I think what we tried to do, while, while I understand what they were saying. I thought the paramount concern was the traffic circulation. And I think that what we were able to do was accomplish the traffic circulation by moving the pump islands. Reducing the canopy, narrowing the distance between some of the pump islands, and reducing the size of the building. And I was at least under the impression that we accomplished the goals of what they were, what they were looking to, what they were looking to do.
Well, the only reason I bring it out is because they're still scoring recommending the reduction of that pump.
What is the date of, what is the date of that recommendation, Mr. Chairman?
The first recommendation I have, the memo was January twenty-sixth, twenty-one, and the second was February eleventh, twenty-one.
So, so at least, at least we are under the impression that, so our revisions to the plans were dated February twenty-third of twenty-one. So we had thought that we had accomplished. The goal, which was for onsite traffic circulation, which would flow better and not impede any of the parking.
The only concern I have is that this hasn't gone back to traffic highway after you made your modifications. I mean, it's a small site, you're putting a seventeen hundred square foot building, four pumps. You have eight parking stalls with seventeen required. How many employees will be in this building? You have any idea on a, on a daily basis during operating hours? And what are the operating hours?
Typically, typically one employee with a, with a rotating manager, and it'd be twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four. You know what my concern is? This, never gave it a thought before, and if I kept visiting this site, that this is the only gas station. For the thirty mile stretch on the east side of William Floyd Parkway. Were you aware of that?
Yeah, and I, and I think that's, I, I think, I, we recognize the fact that it's a divided highway in that particular area, so you have. You know, certain service stations that are on the east side, which service the. Traffic heading north, and this is on the west side, which would service the traffic heading south.
Right, and this would be the only station for thirty mile stretch on the west side, and the, the traffic coming off William Floyd Parkway, the Long Island Expressway in twenty-five and twenty-five A. Particularly during the summer months when Smith Point Coffee is open. This, this. Site is going to be heavily used, and that's my concern with the circulation.
Mr. Chairman, may I, I have some input. I'm Glenn Graham, I'm the.
Mr. Graham, okay, will you raise your right hand, please? You swear a firm to tell the truth, to hold truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Are you the architect who sent me the circulation plan for the sanitation?
What I'd like to just add.
Mr. Graham, you're the architect? I see Michael Dunn is an ar.
Mike is part of my firm, I'm, I'm the owner of the company, Mike is the licensed architect.
So you're not a registered architect?
That is correct.
Okay.
The reason for the fourth pump island can, you can argue it the opposite way, is that. The fourth island allows people to get in and out of the station quicker. If it is as busy as you think it may be, being the only station on the east side. Three posts could actually cause people to back up into the street. While waiting to access the pump, where the fourth will get people in and out quicker.
I understand that. My problem is the, the, the size of the property with the circulation, especially if you have delivery trucks and, you know, with the amount of traffic going in and out. But, you know, I'll let the board decide. I mean, I, I just think the site is way too small for what the client, your client's looking to accomplish.
We do, we follow proper engineering principles with backup.
Well, that site plan, that circulation plan you sent me was not proper. I have to tell you, that was almost an insult to this board. I've never seen a sanitation truck make a hundred and eighty degree turn, make a quick left turn, drive through under a canopy drive between two gas pumps to pick up a sanitation dumpster.
We could pull up the revised sanitary plan.
Okay. All right, the board have any questions?
Can we see that revised sanitary plan that he just referred to?
Truck comes in off of Austin Circle, makes a left. In, straight into the dumpster, lifts up the dumpster. Backs up a few feet and then exits out onto William Floyd Parkway heading south. Similar to what the tanker truck would be doing.
And this has to be done during off-peak hours according to traffic and highway?
Well, generally, Winter Brothers and those companies like to get in early, five, six, seven in the morning before things pick up anyway, so.
So once he picks up the dumpster, he's got to back up to make that turn, correct?
Yeah, and I, as far as I know, if you go to McDonald's, you're gonna have to back up and everybody else, it gets.
Yeah, but there's a resonance about twenty-five feet to the, the west of that.
Traffic trucks are, my own bill, yeah. I, I don't see a site where you can't back up, where you have to lift the dumpster, you have to.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm only bringing out the fact that you have a residential house within twenty-five feet of that truck backing up with the horns going off early morning.
Town code does have a limitation on what's on garbage can be picked up.
We, we would adhere to town code with the dumpster removal.
All right, question by the board?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. Just state education law protects the title of the word architect. And if you're not a licensed architect, you cannot use that term. That's in the state education law, I'd just like to point that out.
You're, you're correct, Mr. Smith, and Mike Dunn is the licensed architect with my firm.
And I think I introduced them as a design professionals.
Within, within the, the, the state, when you say design professional, you're usually referring to a professional engineer or a registered architect.
Any other questions by the board?
Ms. Riley, Ms. Riley, can you put the findings on the board, because we never got them today, so I haven't seen the findings of today?
Issue is that it did not upload the ones with today's date on them.
Okay.
The, the change is that where it says revise the plan, it's naming and dating the plan on number six.
Okay.
So that it's clear that the plan that's be revised is the amended plan that they submitted, not the previous one. To depict those comments, that's the change.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Karen Dunn. I make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Ms. Dunn.
Second, Richard Smith.
Second by Mr. Smith, Mr. Zarcon.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Vote aye.
Mr. Walutus?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
Item number ten, site plan with a special permit, PK Metals at Quorum.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recuse myself from this application as I had prior involvements regarding the enjoyed in shop.
Okay, Ms. Kelly, councilor, can you remove Ms. Kelly from the screen?
The application before you is located at thirty-five forty-two Route one twelve in Quorum. The application is for a site plan with a special permit. Site improvements to the existing PK Metals Recycling and Scrap Metal Facility. Twenty-five thousand five hundred ninety-four square feet of existing office, receiving storage mechanic metal facility. And a welding shop, thirty-eight hundred seventy-two square feet of existing masonry, storage and processing canopies. There are ten staff recommendations, last dated three, four, twenty twenty-one, with seven planning board variances. And that's special permit, and it's all last dated three eight twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, commissioner. Counselor, is the applicant present?
Yes, and Mr. Russo?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Eric Russo, Van Brant, Chesley, and Russo. On behalf of the applicant, which is PK Metals. And also known as Route one twelve Quorum LLC at thirty-five forty-two Route one twelve in Quorum.
Counselor, have you received a copy of the staff recommendations?
We have your, Mr. Chairman, we've received them. And I have the project consultants on if we get into questions about various points of the application. Do you want me to go through, how, how would you like me to proceed?
Present the application as, as it was, you know, to the board, which being done, what you're looking to accomplish, if there's any violations that you're looking to correct.
Certainly. As the board is aware from the recommendations that staff put forward for the regulations. There are four, I'm sorry, seven, a land development regulation standards. In terms of the front yard landscape, orange street trees on all road frontages. Residential buffers on the north side and the south side that we're seeking relief from. And appropriate residential buffer across the street. That was cited, as well as parking and parking in a required front yard. The applicant is before you because the applicant had filed this application, and it has taken a long time to get to this point. We filed the application on April fourteenth of, April third, excuse me, of two thousand fourteen. And we got finally to the zoning board of appeals on September twentieth and January tenth of eighteen. As part of the ZBA applications, there was a decision, we were required to provide a site study. In terms of view to the site, as well as a noise study, which were provided. The town also, as part of the sound study, participated as well. And found that we were in compliance with town code. We reviewed the comment letter of March the third of twenty-one that Peter Fontaine has put forward. As it relates to the issues that appear in your recommendations under items five and six. And there are certificates of existing use, certificates of occupancy, certificates of compliance. Of, for all of the structures on the premises, except for those that have been added and are part of the site plan. The area around the subject property is owned to the south by the cemetery through the diocese of Rockville Center. Which is zoned B one residence. To the west is land owned by the town of Brookhaven as A one residence. And also the diocese of Rockville Center, again, B one residence. To the north is another parcel of property that's owned by the one twelve Properties LLC. And that parcel is vacant land with trees that we were required to remove anything off the site, because it is owned by. A company that is not controlled by the applicant, but has family members that does own that particular parcel of property, and that parcel is zoned. According to the tax nets, et cetera, as A one residence and J two business. Across from the subject property on Route one twelve is property that is owned by the Suffolk County Preserve and the town of Brookhaven. And that's across from Route one twelve. The area has just had and gone through complete road renovations by New York State DOT. Where they installed curb, sidewalk, trees and drainage. And we have provided photos previously to town planning staff about the subject property. Again, we've reviewed the comments, and we have no violations at present with the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. And any tanks that were on site have been removed decade ago. This particular property has been used in the manner that it has been there for. It's going back for almost six decades at this point, to the early seventies. We've also submitted a SWIP through the Office of Bonmuth and Brush. And we got a letter on October ninth of two thousand nineteen from Veronica King. Indicating that the town received the conditional relief supporting documents. And they indicated that the documents would be retained during the construction when it, when it commences. And subject to inspection by the New York State PEC and the town of Brookhaven upon demand. They told us erosion control practices have to be maintained and implemented during the construction phase with silk fencing. And they've allowed us to proceed as far as this is concerned with the drainage and grading that was being proposed. We've tried to make revisions to the site plan that are in compliance with the zoning board of appeals decision. Removing the roof overs where they asked and adding plantings where they asked in compliance with those. There was also a prior ZBA on this application, which goes back to. Excuse me, one second, I have it written down. It was done in March twentieth nineteen ninety-seven. And the change of zone on this particular parcel, which we're in compliance with, was done in March seventeenth of nineteen eighty-one, where it went from B Residence and L one. To L one industrial, with the fact that the front of the property remained unchanged. So when you look at the site plan, the residence that appears on the north has a completely landscaped and treed. Area that the applicants have left in the state that was requested by the change of zone. There was at one point four different access points to the site. But Pat Lenahan with DHB worked through that, and we now are showing the access points on the site, and you can see them on the site plan. The middle one that's being circled there is how you come into the site, and there are weigh scales that are just west of that entrance. And there is an exit on the southerly side. So we closed the other two sites that are being shown on the site plan, and they were done by the state DOT while they were going through the area. And seeking, installing the road improvements that were there. If you have specific questions, I'd be happy to address them. And as I indicated, our consultants are available if there are questions. We have David Wortman from DHB who worked with the site and sound studies. We have Pat Lenahan, we've worked with, with Ryan Winter, who handled the permitting and the approvals with the state DOT. Jeff Volmuth did the SWIP. And Doug Adams designed the site plan that's before you from Young and Young, and has made the modifications as we have gone through this process. We are hopeful that everything is in compliance for an operation that has been there, and is a necessity in terms of environmental. Issues and ridding of, of materials that society wants out and is properly handled. And we have approvals from the health department for toxic waste disposal with a toxic waste permit. And if you have any other questions, we'd all be available to respond to same.
Thank you, councilor. Counselor Reed, is there anyone in the public which to speak on the application?
No, Mr. Chairman.
There's no one in the public? Secretary McCallion, are you, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
We got several emails or letters on this application. Can you just state the names, who they were for, so we can put them as part of the record? You have them handy?
I have a, I don't have them handy in the media room.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, councilor.
I have copies of the emails. I was able to obtain them prior to the hearing, because I wanted to be aware of what concerns were. The prior emails that were received were from a James and Joan Orlando at Four Willow Terrace in Quorum. And their concern, their first item concern based on the email said, "Sound levels generated by PK Metals. Would like to see sound levels decreased by the use of mitigation measures that would include, but not limited to. Strategic planning of sound daffels designed and located by irreparable acoustic consultants such as Saramian Associates." And visual issues, plantings to help beautify the north side of the property was supposed to take place. To the best of our knowledge, these plantings did not take place. And those were their concerns, and they're indicating their new homeowners and residents in the Willow Wood at Overton Preserve condo development. On the north side of the property, which is one tax lot north of the other property that is owned by. One twelve Properties LLC. That particular lot is about a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty feet wide by about nineteen hundred feet long. And that's the piece that I referenced was A one and J two. The other letter or email that was received was from Robert and Debbie Mahoney at Eight Willow Terrace. And it indicates as a resident of the Overton Preserve, we are writing regarding PK Metals, which is located at thirty-five forty-two Route one twelve in Quorum. PK Metals, which is located at thirty-five forty-two Route 112 in Corum. Before this application is considered by the town, we'd like to be aware of the following. Our community clubhouse, pool, tennis courts, playground is adjacent to the property. Since we've been living there over two years, we've been waiting for PK to address the sound levels that come from their operation. We understand that the zoning board granted their application for a variance in January twenty eighteen, subject to conditions in site plan review relating to mitigation of sound in sight on the north property line. To our knowledge, they have not complied with these conditions because on most days the noise is unbearable. Has anyone monitored or tested the sound levels to make sure they are safe for our residents in compliance? And then the last document that was submitted, and I got a copy of that, was sent to me as well, was from the CLAR organization, signed by Stephen CLAR, to the, you, the chairman, as the developer of the contiguous property of the applicant, with Willow Wood at Overton Preserve and as president of the Homeowners Association for the Community, we vehemently object to the application of PK Metals in any way expanding their operation, which we believe are currently in violation of the law. I'm closing a copy of my letter to the commissioner of the planning board dated May eleventh twenty eighteen, highlighting the violations of the application and the applicant, its failure to abide by January ten twenty eighteen resolution of the ZBA. In addition, I am enclosing a seven-page summary of a sound survey and report dated nine, November nine twenty seventeen that I commissioned with AKRF Inc., at my sole cost and expense, concluding the applicant is in violation of current sound regulations of the town. There are over fifty residents now living in this new community with many more to follow. The activities of the applicant have created a nuisance which affects their right to live in a peaceful and quiet environment. The application of PK Metals should be denied in its entirety. In addition, the applicant should be ordered to comply with ZBA directive and other, otherwise comply with the laws and sound levels and other application regulations. And then he attaches to that his letter to Mr. Bertoli, Julio, which was dated May eleven twenty eighteen, and his AKRF report about noise. My concern about that, and that's to my knowledge, the only comments that were received. As far as the zoning board of appeals, the decision in this matter, the zoning board asked us to undertake a site and site view and a sound study, which we did, and I'm gonna ask that you allow the consultant, David Wortman from DHB, explain the process. Because in this particular instance, we rolled and invited Mr. CLAR to come and join in the application, not only with our study that we were having done, but also when the town, in compliance with the zoning board of appeals request, asked them to participate, they did not do so, and they chose to proceed on their own. So if you would be kind enough, I would ask that you let Mr. Wortman just explain the process as to those two issues, and I think we'll have some clarity in response to that. The zoning board of appeals, we did the studies, we haven't done any of site work because we have to wait for the planning board to grant an approval and then proceed to get permits. So at this, I ask that you let Mr. Wortman enter the hearing, and he can give you an update as to that.
All right, Counselor. Counselor Ray, you want to bring Mr. Wortman in, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have some people from the public that wish to speak. I think if you want to have Mr. Wortman proceed, and then I can bring that person in.
Let's have Mr. Wortman make his presentation, and we'll hear from the public, and then we'll bring it back to Counselor Russo to answer those concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good afternoon. My name is David Wortman. I am the Senior Environmental Manager for VHB Engineering with offices in Hop Hog, New York.
Okay, Mr. Wortman, yes, can you raise your right hand, please?
Excuse me.
You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, you can proceed.
Thank you. So as Mr. Russo generally described, this application is designed to improve operations of the existing facility, such as through improvements related to drainage and other site plan requirements, and no expansion of the buildings or facility is proposed. And VHB was retained by the applicant to, among other things, review the proposal and specifically evaluate the potential for the facility to adversely affect surrounding properties with respect to noise and visual impacts. To that end, VHB prepared a sound study for the subject facility, which has evaluated the facility with respect to compliance with Chapter fifty, Noise Control, of the town of Brookhaven Town Code. The results of that analysis were presented to the town in the form of a memorandum dated October eleventh twenty seventeen, at the time that this matter was before the zoning board of appeals. This effort included the collection of sound level measurements at a total of eight measurement sites along the western, southern, and eastern boundaries of the subject property, and along the property line to the north of the subject property, along the CLAR Realty, Miller Realty Associates site, as it was called at the time, which is currently in development with a multifamily residential community. The sound level measurements were conducted during typical operations of the PK Metals facility, and it's our understanding that there have been no substantial changes in facility operations since the time of the VHB sound study. You may be familiar, the town's noise control ordinance limits sounds from industrial properties to residential receiving properties to a threshold of sixty-five decibels at the property boundary. The results of our sound study confirm that sound levels were below the respectful, respective threshold at all of the aforementioned property boundaries, with the exception that measured sound levels on the east property boundary, which is the site's frontage on Route 112, slightly exceeded sixty-five decibels. With respect to the boundary of the property to the north, meaning the property that's under development with multifamily use, sound levels were measured to be fifty-three-point-four decibels and fifty-one-point-two decibels near what I'll call the active portion of the subject property, the central and western portion, and only forty-one-point-seven decibels toward the eastern portion of the subject property, which is much less active. These results are well below the maximum permitted daytime sound levels established in the noise control ordinance. And with regard to these results, I would just also like to note, for the board's awareness, that the town of Brookhaven Public Safety Captain Joel Shapiro had visited the subject property around that same time on three separate occasions. Those were October fifth, sixth, and thirteenth of that same year, twenty seventeen. And the public safety officer's conclusion at the time, he also determined that the facility was complying with the town's noise ordinance.
Excuse me, one second, I don't mean to interrupt you.
Please.
Just looking at a, a sound report that was presented to the board or sent in, that seems to contradict what you're saying, that the charts and graphs here show those levels to the adjacent property going well over sixty-five, so, and this was in, I guess this report is dated November ninth, two thousand and seventeen. So are they just wrong, or what would be the discrepancy?
Sure, thank you for asking. So the AKRF report, which you're referring to, dated November ninth, twenty seventeen, was also shared with us at the time, and those results presented just essentially different data. You know, there are different ways of presenting noise data. There are, of course, variable conditions at play, and the reason why we believe, for example, the results were so different are because, as that report indicates, the meter was set, for example, to a fast response setting, which is going to modify the way the data is presented. So even if you had sound level meter data from more than one piece of equipment at the same time, you might get slightly different numbers based on what your settings are on the equipment, but VHB, our noise engineer that led this effort, is fully confident that we've presented our study in a manner that is fully conforming to the town's noise ordinance. And we also would like to highlight, again, that at the time that we conducted our study, around the same time, which is also around the same time that AKRF conducted their study, the town's own public safety officer had visited the site, not once, but on multiple occasions, and came to the similar conclusion as VHB's analysis, indicating that the subject facility does comply with the town's noise ordinance. The fact that there were different data on the record, meaning, you know, on behalf of the neighbor, is one report says one thing, and then the VHB report submitted on behalf of the applicant said something different. The town's own data, we believe, is very compelling, and also, as Mr. Russo started to describe, we had welcomed an opportunity to conduct a sort of a joint study with them of the facility's operations, and at that time, we were denied access to the receptor property, and it seems that the other party was not willing to continue with that, and it's my understanding that at the time, the zoning board felt satisfied by the record in front of it and including the town's own data.
What standard? Okay, so you're saying that the other group used a different standard? Which is the most recognized standard that is used for this type of sound study?
Again, I would say that the, the question is probably best answered by someone at VHB that designed this study, that performed the study, that presented these results. However, I am very familiar with these sorts of studies, having worked on numerous similar applications across Long Island, and having reviewed on behalf of municipalities many studies like this, and as well participated in sound studies such as this. And in my experience, the type of settings that were described in VHB's memo are totally appropriate for, for the type of study that's been done here.
They're not proposing, they're not proposing any type of sound mitigation at this time?
There are very, myriad site changes proposed in order to, again, really improve what is an existing operation and longstanding operation here, and while, I would not describe any of the specific improvements as a noise mitigation measure, I do believe that, you know, further adherence to the town's site planning standards as proposed will have an overall beneficial impact, if any, on sound levels, which are currently, again, in compliance with the town's noise ordinance.
Is there anything that can be added to the site to try and mitigate some of the sound levels? Is there anything out there that you can add to the site? That you're aware of?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Also, what you also have to recognize on the property is, and when you can see it on the, the site plan that Doug Adams prepared, the elevations between our site and the land to the, what would be north of it, there is severe grade elevation drops, which is why the zoning board required plantings being proposed on portions of the property as it went along on the north side of the property. And the other interesting point in this is if there were noise violations, the town investigators who've gone out and went out as part of this study would issue noise ordinance violations, and there have not been any.
Counsel, I'm just, I'm just asking a question, if there was something like additional vegetation, it could have been added to the site, but the way you're saying it, it sounds like you've already done that.
We have done some, we have done some, but again, the other point that I want to dwell on, because this is very important here, that land to the north that Willow Woods was built on was a mined property that was purchased by the CLAR organization, and the people in the CLAR organization were well aware of the operation that was going on one lot away from them, and they still proceeded with their application and came before you and got site plan approval. And interestingly enough, in the zoning board of appeals decision, going back to August twentieth of nineteen ninety-seven, one of the conditions indicated that the operating hours would be seven AM to five thirty PM, Monday through Friday, and Saturdays from eight AM to five thirty PM. So this operation, with the exception of Sunday, has been an ongoing operation that has been there for the better part of six decades. So it's not something new, it's, and obviously, the county land to the east, the town and the diocese land to the west and the south, no one has ever complained, and when the land was mined, the issue became, oh, it's next to this particular operation that is doing. And your own secretary of the planning board recalls the time when she and her father would go and drop off batteries there, and she recounted to me that she was five years old at the time. So without trying to disclose anyone's age, I'm sitting here and saying, this is not new to the community. So I understand, and I appreciate that, but it was also interesting to note that the sales office asked and tried to buy our property, and in addition to that, wanted to figure out when our hours of operation were so that they would open their sales office when we weren't in operation. I can't speak to anything more than beyond that. It has taken us at this point, seven years.
I don't want to get in the middle of a civil action here. Counselor, you said you have people in the public wish to come in on these applicants. You want to bring them in?
Kimberly Essig?
Okay.
Hi.
Hello, can you raise your right hand, please? You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Hi, so my name is Kimberly Essig. Thank you so much for having me on. Just a couple of things, I wanted to speak on Mr. Russo's presentation. I know that he was asking for relief for plantings on both the north side and the south side of the PK Metals property. Also, as he mentioned, nobody has complained in the past, that's because the south side is a cemetery, so obviously, nobody is going to be complaining from that side. The people that live to the north side of the property have lived here for about two and a half to three years. So I do understand that the previous application from twenty eighteen did mention that they would be planting on the north side of the property as well as the south side, and that still has yet to happen. So I just don't understand how we can proceed and move forward with a new application when the last application hasn't been met. And I understand that there have been no complaints to the town as far as noise variances go, however, adjacent to the property, just on the north side, that is where our clubhouse, our pool, our playground, our tennis courts are, and there are some days over the summer when we're all outside and, you know, enjoying the pool, where we can't even hear each other, hear one another speak. And I do understand that the grading of the property, it is much lower, you know, altitude than, than where we are, however, the noise is completely unbearable. Another thing that I, and I do understand we have an environmental engineer on, is just that the concern of pieces of metal, and I know this operation has been going on for over six decades, I understand, but we kind of have to also take into consideration the livelihood of the people that live nearby, and just the noise pollution that has been going on, as well as potential for there to be scrap metal maybe in the air that we're breathing, and, and that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. I'm gonna have Counselor Russo address all these questions at the end.
Mr. Chairman, I have someone else here to cut, to bring in, if I can bring that person in. Tassie, I have in the hearing?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I, what's your name?
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'd just like to say.
Well, wait, can I just interrupt you one second? Can you spell your name, because I can't see anything on the screen.
Sure, it's Jan, J A N. My last name is Tassie, T like Thomas, A S S like Sam, I E.
Okay, can you please raise your right hand, let me know when you have it up?
I have it up.
You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Ms. Tassie, go ahead.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, I appreciate it. I'd just like to say that I moved in in May. I understand the application goes back as far as into the nineties, but no one was living here then. I understand the application goes back as far as into the 90s, but no one was living here then. So to do a sound test in 2017, my question is, is have you done one recently? What time of year did you do it? And our quality of life is being affected by the sound that this company is making. So it, and if they have said a couple of years ago that they were going to plant trees and such to help keep the sound down, and they haven't done that, what guarantee do we have that if they move forward with a new plan that they will follow through on that? All of the, all of the occupants here have invested a lot of money to live here. And we certainly don't want the value of our property to go down because this company is make, making so much noise that we can't enjoy the amenities that we bought into.
Thank you, I have the Counselor Russo address that question when we finish with the other public speakers.
Mr. Chairman, let me, just give me one moment, please. I'd like to remove. There's a written comment that we've received from, from Mr. Garcia, Joe Garcia, who says that the property, the sound level is very high and suggests that the report doesn't necessarily reflect the sound levels and suggested sending inspector. And I have Mr. Clark, let me bring him in. Okay, Mr. Clark is in the meeting.
Yes, hello.
Hello, Counselor, how are you?
All right, Mr. Chairman, how are you? And thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. I know there are several of my homeowners concerned. We would certainly be willing to meet and do another sound application together jointly or separately or with the town specifically to see what we've been talking about for a long time. When we hired a professional firm a couple of years ago, they were clearly showing the numbers exceeding the town's requirements of sound. And for some reason, nobody on the other side would listen, and the zoning board of appeals said, well, it's already done, it'll be going for a site plan someday. And all I can tell you, as we move more residents in, the sound seems to be getting worse, not better. So we are very concerned and believe that everybody in our community deserves the opportunity to have the town look at this seriously and be concerned about what is a violation of what the town code is for the sound. So we specifically, and we don't want it to be known on a certain day, so they do less calling out of their crushing and other activities. We'd like it to be a surprise on a normal day so that we can really count their activities. I think that's what concerns us now and concerned us then. If they have a week's notice or a day's notice, they will just practice it in a very quiet manner as opposed to the crushing manner that we hear as the residents who live there. I think that's what's concerning us most, and we certainly want to work it out as a surprise as opposed to saying, oh, it's just fine, just tell them on Wednesday we're coming, and they won't act as vigorously as they usually do.
You're muted.
You did.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, thank you, Counselor. Yeah, Counselor Ray, is there anyone else wish to speak on this application?
No. No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Counselor Russo, you want to address the concerns that were just presented?
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Good evening, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I, your question again?
You just heard several speakers, you want to address the concerns about the plantings on the north side and the sound levels when they were taken, and if you're willing to do something else with the CLAR organization?
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, the, what, what work has been, there has been no additional work. The Zoning Board of Appeals application and the grant that was issued on January 22nd, 2018, indicates granted subject as type 2 action, subject to removal of the canopy, B3B, subject to the removal of outdoor storage and vehicles from the adjacent parcel depicted on the tax lot, which I referenced earlier, which has been done, subject to site plan review by the Planning Division for mitigation of sound and site issues at the northern property line, and subject to all conditions previously imposed by the Board of Zoning Appeals from 1997. As I indicated to you, I've provided those documents. We have not gotten to a site plan hearing until today. We wouldn't be applying for a building permit, and the building permit is only for one building in the far back of the property and complying with site plan requirements that this board puts forward as conditions that are in the staff comments that were given to us as of March 4. We wouldn't have gotten a building permit, we wouldn't have changed anything on the site without benefit of the building permit. As far as I recognize the residents' concerns, that they're talking about plantings, they're talking about a sound barrier, they're talking about their clubhouse, their pool and their playground. However, Mr. Clark did not and was invited specifically to join us and the town. It, the town independently, all three of us together, and declined and refused to participate. The cost of doing that study again, if this board is concerned and wants us to do it again, I would discuss it with the applicant, and I will get back to you and confirm that particular issue, if that's what you wish us to do.
I was just asking you to address the concerns that were raised, that's all.
Well, I, and again, we went through great expense, the operation hasn't changed from when we did the original noise and site use studies. They're, they're trying to say that they're greater now. The applicant has advised that they, their operation is the operation that was. They have not done anything differently in 2021 that they did in 2017, 2018. If the planning board sets forth all of the conditions that they recited as of March 4, we're prepared to accept and comply with those conditions. I, I don't know what else I can say to you. You know, we've come forward and tried to do everything that was possible and asked of us, both from the zoning board and the planning staff, and we're in compliance with county standards. So, and New York State DEC standards. So I, I, I'm sort of flubbed by where to go with this. I mean, this is an industrial use, it has been there for six, over six decades. And two, one, two lots away is where a condominium association and condominiums are now under construction with people moving in, with a sales office. It's buyer beware, caveat empti. You're telling me that all these people bought homes and didn't see this industrial facility? You can't miss it on the, on the roadways, you're traveling north and south on Route 112. And yes, we recognize that the cemetery is to the south, so we have no complaints from the cemetery or the town. Fully aware of that.
Counselor Ray, is there anyone else in the public that you mentioned?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there is someone who would like to speak, if I can bring them in. And please, if there's anyone else who would like to speak, please advise.
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, I'd just like to comment on.
Mr. Mahoney, can you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, help you God?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to make a, a comment on Mr. Russo's comment that PK Metals has been here for six decades. Okay, that's great. So what does that mean? Like, they have the monopoly on the entire land surrounding their facility? That they, that nobody, the, the area can't grow and expand? That, oh, it's buyer beware, like, what does that mean? So the entire area to the north of, of PK Metals was supposed to be, what, vacant forever? They make it sound like, like, basically like, we here and too bad on anybody else that wants to come in. So, so the community can't grow, and we have to stand by and just put up with PK Metals and their noise. I don't think that's right. I think they should have to make some kind of administrative changes to change the noise level to accommodate people who do want to live in the area. It shouldn't be just all about them, that's all I'm going to say.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that closed the public portion. So, Mr. Russo, you just want to address that last question, and we're going to close the hearing. Mr. Russo? You're muted. Counselor Russo, you're unmuted.
I, I got it, I thought Ms. Ray had done that, I apologize. So the other interesting point that I would like to share here, this is an ongoing operation. There are 60 employees that work at this specific facility. In addition to that, with the development of the condominium plan that was put forward, and Mr. Clark's awareness and the design of that, why did not they also figure out as part of their plan, that perhaps they, as part of their design, may need to have some sort of sound mitigation on their end with plantings or walls as well? Because they're two lots away, and they've designed their pool, their play area, their other recreational facilities, and placed it on the property line where this is. So in this particular point, I have nothing further to add. If the planning board members have concerns, I'd be happy to address them. The site plan, as we see it, has now addressed all of the staff comments that were asked of us in the design and complied with Zoning Board of Appeals as well as Town Board covenants when the property was rezoned.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions by the board?
I just want to, Mr. Russo, to know that we did make a change today to the staff recommendations, so they're last dated today, and that would be number nine. You referring to ones from 38, I have them up on the screen for you, that the applicant owner and site plan should all times comply with the BZA grant and the town code, Chapter 50 Noise Control.
And again, the documents that we saw, and by adding that, we would still have no issues with the conditions.
Okay, I just wanted you to know that that change was made.
I did not receive that.
All right, any questions by the board?
Mr. Chairman, I, I just want to, if Commissioner Riley could just put the aerial up for a second, please. Mr. Russo, the site plan that's proposed is going to clean this site up considerably, correct?
Absolutely.
And, and, and it's going to be, it's going to be better. Now, looking at this, this aerial, can you kind of quickly just go over and, and tell us, you know, it looks like that, that all of these things that are towards the left lower side are going to be gone, there's going to be a recharge basin. Can you just kind of go over quickly how much that aerial is going to change when the site plan is completed?
What I would ask is that you allow Doug Adams to come in, and he can review point for point all of the respective areas. He is on the call here, he is the project design engineer. As well as Jeff Vollmuth, he's also involved, he did all the drainage for the site and prepared the swifts, so whichever of those gentlemen you can get in to go through that.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be fine with that. I'd just like somebody to quickly go through and just point out, like, maybe, you know, as, as, as Commissioner Riley circles areas or whatever, just, you know, how these are going to change and how it's going to be better than it is right now.
I have one other question, what's the date of this aerial?
I don't know.
Hold on, 2020. 2020.
Okay, so then it would have, the New York State DOT should have road improvements on it? If we enlarge it?
Eh.
Maybe.
Yeah, I can't.
Doesn't look like it.
Um, I, I'm hopeful that Mr. Adams or Mr. Vollmuth can be brought in. Are they there?
Yes, Mr. Adams, Mr. Adams, they're both in the meeting, Mr. Adams, do you want to speak?
I, they both go over these two points.
Mr. Adams, raise your right hand, please. You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, help you God?
I do.
Okay, Ms. Adams.
I think just generally speaking, that when you look at it from an aerial perspective, yes, in the area to the west of the property, the end of the bulk area there, that's going to be a recharge basin, sort of a standard recharge basin that you would expect to see when you see a recharge basin. And I guess all of those appurtenances that are there through the operation will obviously have to be, you know, removed from there, if they are still there today. I think generally, everything else that we've done here was basically driven by coming into code compliance, whether it be with some landscaping, dark sky compliant lights, and then just an overall refining of their own operation and their logistics of moving around the property. The drainage system that is incorporated with that recharge basin is designed to do a better job of bringing, you know, the runoff from the facility into that recharge basin rather than disperse throughout each, each pool that are just all over the property right now. But really, other than that, it's, it's, there's not much going on except to start to, or attempt to come into compliance with, with, with the town's.
Are any of the buildings that we're looking at going to be removed or replaced?
I'm sorry?
Are any of the buildings that we're looking at going to be removed or replaced? And this is John Rose.
I, I don't believe we are proposing removing any buildings.
Okay.
And, and the landscaping that people spoke about, that they talked about from an earlier approval is going to be added to the northern, northern property line?
Let me take a look at the landscaping.
Just so the board knows, they are seeking a relief on that northerly buffer. So I don't know what landscaping they're proposing.
Yeah, I believe that on the northern property line, that I don't know that there is adequate space to put landscaping without taking existing vegetation down. For most of that property line, the, the PK Metals property is actually lower, a sort of depressed, which is good for, for sound attenuation, actually. You know, the bulk of their activity happens in that, sort of that middle of the property. I don't know if you can point to the buildings B5, B6, B7, the canopy areas that are, that's in sort of a sunken area, and the, the grade on the northern property line is somewhere eight, 10 feet higher than that, and then it's wooded, and then it goes down as you head towards the, the north. So there really isn't an opportunity to landscape in that area. Most of the landscaping that we are showing is either on the south property line, near building B3, or in and around the front along, along Route 112.
Okay, thank you.
So Chairman, can I just ask a quick question? Was that something that you received zoning board relief from on that buffer? On the north?
The Zoning Board of Appeals, minimum buffer adjacent to residential zone required 100 feet, zero along northern side, and five feet southern side, minimum side yard 25 feet, eight foot north side and seven southern side. So they, the application was granted as presented. And it also says, subject to site plan review by the Planning Division in that. And it talks about, and we also added adjoining properties and roadways, talking about those as well. Now, there are plantings that the staff came in, asked, and the zoning board asked for on the south side. And then, as was indicated by the applicant, there's very, and by Mr. Adams, there's very little room with the grade difference to put anything on the north side. And the, that, I mean, I provided you with a copy of the grant letter. You have what the zoning board decided.
Yeah, it's just not in my package, that's why I was asking.
There's very little.
So doesn't your client also control the parcel immediately to the north?
No, he does not. It's owned by an LLC that is not controlled by this particular LLC.
Okay.
Different participants, they may have the same address, but they have no interest in this subject property.
So they couldn't, so you're saying that they then couldn't use that parcel to add some other attenuation?
Absolutely not. And that was also, when this application was filed, there was discussion that possibly we should acquire that parcel from the LLC. And then there was realized, realization that there was clearings on the property that would have to comply with the New York State Pine Barrens requirements and seek a board variance for that. And when we realized that that was not possible, that whole idea of utilizing the northern parcel was eliminated. So it remained on the parcel that it was always on, that the change of zone was granted, because it would have required a change of zone on the northern parcel from the A1 residence in J. from the A1 Residence and J2 to L1 Industrial, which we did not want to entertain. Also, I, my clients texted me because they are listening, but they're not participating, and they had no knowledge whatsoever when the noise studies were being done by the town or by the VHB, because we told them that we didn't want them to be aware of it.
Okay. Are there any other questions by the board or Commissioner or Counsel? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close this public hearing and place the item on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Mr. Rose.
Second, Richard Smith.
Secondly, Mr. Smith. Mrs. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly.
She's abstaining.
Oh, I, correct. Mr. Walutus.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 6-0 with one of recusal being Ms. Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd throw back, I'd throw back to item number one.
That one is adjourned.
Item, item number one is adjourned till April 5th. Item number two, Jerusalem Hollow Road at Manor Hill.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this application for revised bond figures with staff recommendations one through three, last revised February 5th, 2021, as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Motion by Ms. Dunn.
Second, Richard Smith.
Secondly, Mr. Smith. Mrs. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly, back in, Counselor?
Yes. Oops, I'm sorry. I just muted her.
Uh, she voted aye. Mr. Walutus.
I vote aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 7-0. Item three, B Builders Group Incorporated, Shirley.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this application to modify the footprint and elevations of a previously approved 4,000 square foot major restaurant with accessory drive-through, including parking, drainage and landscaping, with staff recommendations one through four, last revised 2/22/21, as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Motion by Ms. Dunn.
Second, Richard Smith.
Secondly, Mr. Smith, Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Walutus.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 7-0. Item number four is being heard on March 22nd. Item number five, Heatherwood Golf at Sotarket.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the amended site plan, um, with, for the Heatherwood, um, uh, community with staff recommendations numbered one through three, last revised February 25th, 2021, as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Motion by Mr. Smith.
I'll second that motion.
Second, sorry, second.
Secondly, Mr. Zarcone. Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Walutus.
Aye.
Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 7-0. Item number six, Champion Specialty Services at Holtsville.
Mr. Chairman, this is Board Member Pete Zarcone. I make a motion to approve this application with all staff comments one through 10, but I'd like to make an amendment or add in addition to number one. After it says or higher quality barrier, I would like to include a chain link fence with black slats. If you want me, I can read the whole thing over or just add that?
You can add that.
Okay, uh, with all staff, not one to 10, uh, and two planning board special permits, 85-564K and 85-565D. Uh, and I want to change the date to today's date, which would be 3/8/2021, as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Okay, motion by Mr. Zarcone.
Second that motion.
Second, Mr. Walutus.
Secondly, Mr. Walutus. I have a question on this. Counselor Ray, you there?
Yes.
Uh, the amended item number one. Does he have the flexibility to do, uh, the woods fence, the stockade fence or the, uh, privacy fencing and utilize the black chain link fence as an option for the gate? Or we...
Yes, I, I, that's, I think that if we put that in there as an option, it gives him all three options.
Yeah.
That they can then, then he can work with staff. Um, that they'll have the, you know, that they can put in, maybe the fencing near the gate is stuck, you know, is different. I think that would be okay.
I think that's what it was alluding to. So the amended motion that Mr. Zarcone just made, will that suffice or do you want to?
It will suffice.
Do you want, do you want to add that he also sits down and talks to staff?
Or you can say, you know, per staff approval.
All right, at the end of number one, I'd like to have it per staff approval.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Mr. Zarcone, second by Mr. Walutus.
Review, however you want to say it.
Okay.
Secondly, by Mr. Walutus. Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 7-0. Uh, item seven, Hidden Meadows, STP of Middle Island.
Mr. Chairman, this is Board Member John Rose. I'd like to make, make a motion to adopt a negative declaration.
Motion for a neg deck by Mr. Rose.
Second, Richard Smith.
Secondly, Mr. Smith, Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Walutus.
Aye.
Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries 7-0.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a further motion to approve the applicant's request to replace a failing sewage treatment plant with a new sewage treatment plant, along with all associated improvements and along with all staff recommendations number one through six, last revised March 4th, 2021, as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Motion by Mr. Rose.
Second, Richard Smith.
Secondly, Mr. Smith, Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly. Mr. Walutus. Mr. Walutus.
Aye.
Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 7-0. Item number eight, Tate's Bake Shop, site work at East Merchers.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for a negative secret declaration.
Motion for a neg deck by Ms. Dunn.
Second, Richard Smith.
Secondly, Mr. Smith, Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Walutus.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 7-0.
Mr. Chairman, I make a further motion to approve this application for parking lot expansion, including drainage, lighting and landscaping, with staff recommendations one through 12, including planning board variance 85-855A, last revised 2/5/21, as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Motion by Ms. Dunn.
Second, Richard Smith.
Secondly, Mr. Smith, Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Walutus.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 7-0. Item number nine, I'd like to leave on a decision calendar. Item 10.
Mr. Chairman, can we...
Number 10, I think we should leave on the decision calendar.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Okay. Those are the decision calendar. Uh, U-Haul moving? Are we waiting for BZA on that? Did we get the final? Is, is it? Do you know anything on the U-Haul? Still waiting?
But they do have a date, so we're, we're hopeful.
Do we know the date that is yet or?
It's in April.
Okay. Sunset Bluffs, item number 12, at Miller Place.
Chairman, I have an application to approve, I have a, a, uh, motion to approve this application for a relief from covenants to authorize one additional building lot for lot number 28 on a filed map known as Su, at Sunset Bloods, Bluffs at Miller Place, uh, pursuant to staff recommendations one through six, dated November 18th, 2020, and pursuant to written findings and conclusions, uh, dated today, March 8th, 2021, as, uh, conditions and covenants of the approval.
And a motion by Mr. Walutus.
Mr. Chairman, Board Member Pete Zarcone, I'll second that motion.
Secondly, Mr. Zarcone, Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 7-0. Anything the board would like to discuss before we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to ask on PK Metals, what are we going to be waiting for in order to make a decision on that?
Counselor?
Yeah, I think that there needs to be a little bit of review regarding the noise code and, um, the, the buffers that they are proposing.
Okay.
Mr. Rose, is there anything else the board would like to discuss? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Chairman, this is Board Member Pete Zarcone. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Zarcone.
Second that motion.
Secondly, by Ms. Kelly, Mr. Walutus.
Aye.
Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.